All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting study session for October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. And we're gonna go ahead and open up the study session with public comments. Madam City Clerk, I understand we have a written comment. And that is from Diego Rubacalva Alvarez. And Mr. Alvarez mentions that that the council consider adopting fees related to the administration of the mobile home space rent stabilization ordinance. And all the council members on the dais, as well as those that are not present, have received a copy of that written statement. Thank you very much, Mr. Alvarez. Now, moving on to item number A, which is cost recovery and user fee schedule. And we do have a presentation by staff, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I have Angelina Garcia, who's gonna introduce our consultants.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, we have before us revenue cost specialists Chu Tai and Eric Johnson that were key and the leads on performing this very comprehensive cost and fee study. The reason for this study session is not only to provide City Council with a little bit in-depth overview of everything that is included in the cost allocation plan and fee study, but also provide council a little bit more insight as to some of the recreation and park rental fees that are currently generating zero dollars for the city. And so the city has to subsidize the full cost of providing those services. The public hearing is a requirement of the fee schedule. That will be provided, be brought back to council November fourteenth. But we wanted the study session to be the starting point of the process. And then we'll follow it up by one-on-ones to go over, you know, as requested by council, to go over the details of the fees by department. We are all available to field any questions at that point. But for today, again, we're just gonna give you the overview of what is all included in the cost allocation and fee study, as well as to highlight the Parks and Recs facility rentals. So I'll turn it over to Chu, who'll present the first part of this presentation.
Thank you, Angelina. Good me, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Chu Tai from RCS. First, I'm gonna give you like a overview of the process. And then we'll also talk about the fiscal summary of how we did. The last fee study you did was in two thousand and seventeen. We were fortunate to be selected to do that. We kicked off this one in two thousand and twenty-two of December. It's been a long process, hundreds of hours of our time, working with staff, every department, and lots of their time going through hundreds of fees. So we're happy to be here with the results of our finding. The data we use is two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. And the scope of work is a cost allocation plan and a comprehensive user fee update. Eric and I, our company's been in business for forty-three years. We're one of the first in the state to do this, and we've done hundreds of this. So what is a cost allocation plan user fee study? Obviously, the city offers services rather than departments. So we break out, you know, in this example here, we break out the costs and we shake it up and we restructure. We recast it into basic services and charges for funds. So you can see here, there's a lot of indirect costs for administration, such as city council, city manager, communications. We shake that up and we allocate those to the departments that provide services, such as the community development, public works, parks and recreation. Then we further allocate it out based on the positions. Every position has a fully burdenality rate. Here's another way of presenting that. You're familiar with the Community Development Department, Public Works Department, Parks and Recreation. These departments provide services to the public. They provide it to other sources. But the yellow is the indirect cost that's provided from finance, from the city manager's legal, towards these departments. And then it also includes the FTE, and so we allocate those costs to the FTEs. So it's a big task. Here's the list of all the fees that we found out. And it's over a hundred there, a hundred, close to two hundred. And again, it took all the time to go through it. So first, we identified all the fees. Then we looked at who does it and how much time it takes. And again, that's meeting with all the departments. In this example, like the project planner spends twenty hours, community development director spends two hours, twelve a year. We itemize every single item, so we get to the bottom line is what is the cost of providing that service. We focus on allocating hundred percent of city services. So while some staff, some departments provide services to the applicant, to the users, they also provide general service to taxpayers. And we want to capture a hundred percent, make sure it balances out. So once we have all these time data, then we balance the position and we apply the overheads in the fully burdenality rate. And what that gives us is the cost of services for each service that's out in our report. Then we do a reality test. We say, okay, this is what we calculate. Department heads, what do you think? And we make sure they're comfortable with that and say, you know, okay, wow, this cost is, looks a little high, a little low. And we test and we test and make sure that it's the accurate times involved for the task that they provided. Then we also looked at the legal defensibility. We've been looking at this where everywhere, making sure that all your fees pass the legal test. And we look at cost recovery. This is typically with the market demand-based fees. While a lot of the fees are based on hours and time and costs involve some fees that's generate, it's based on market demand, and we cannot charge the full cost for it. So once we finished meeting with department heads, we produced a final study. We do a fiscal analysis and share that with the finance department. And we coordinate the update of the fee adoption. And that's where we are here today. And I want to move on to discussing the tax versus the fee. So a tax is typically benefits the community as a whole. You use tax dollars for it, and some examples include public safety, street maintenance, park maintenance, and code enforcement. On the other side, personal choice or fees, you can identify the customer. You could identify the service that's measurable and it benefits the individual or group. Subsidy levels may be based on social safety, welfare reasons. For example, development services. Like if I have a house in Pico Rivera and I want to improve my bathroom, I would definitely hire a plumber and contract. But I also need the city to be involved to issue the permit, make sure it's inspected correctly. And that is a personal choice service that benefits me. On the other side, you know, the other part, when they're paving the street in front of me, I hope the city doesn't go and hand out a bill for every household to say, this is how much it costs for your fee. So that's a tax-based fee. So the results of our study is that we calculate the blue bottom where it says personal choice service. We calculate the total cost from that. And then we look at the revenues that you're charging right now. And the fees and charges right now do not equal. And the subsidy we see here is two point eight million dollars. So basically, fees cannot, the fees collected cannot support the fee-provided services in a tune of two point eight million dollars. The only source that comes from that are taxes. However, the reality is you cannot collect that, again, because of market demand there. It's hard to see on here, but Parks and Recreation, that is where the biggest subsidy is. And that's the reality we found in our work, line of work, is that most cities, you do not want to charge the full cost recovery for that because it would be too high and there would not be a lot of attendance in that. However, I do want to focus on the other one, building, city clerk finance, planning, public safety, public works. I was impressed that the cost recovery is pretty good, that it's showing here of close to a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. Other studies we've done within, you know, eight years' worth, they're losing, I would say, you know, that subsidy, they're losing about half a million dollars. But because Pico Rivera's been doing a good job at updating your fees, that the subsidy right now is only two hundred thousand dollars. And we want to focus that this is a comprehensive update. I'm glad you're updating it. And what we recommend is always, you know, between these fee studies, do a CPI update so that the fees are always close to being current cost recovery as possible. We focus on improving cost recovery. This is also a good time to add, remove, redefine user fees that doesn't work. We do the legal review. We confirm the revenue collection, making sure that deposits are being collected. And we evaluate the market demand and see what the market would study based on our studies throughout the state. Here's a good summary of all the hundred forty fees, service areas we have. There's three new, eighty-four increased. And some of those are deposit-based. And to me, like, I consider that an increase when the, you know, when the consultant increases their fees or the fully burdenality rate increase, so that's an increase there. Five were restructured, sixteen were no change, either the legal limit, market sensitivity, or some are surcharge, or sometimes the fees were just recalculated and it turns out you're exactly where you're supposed to be. Thirty-two were decreased, and that's surprising here. Most of it's in public works, and I think that's a good, you know, I'm glad for the city that you're, you know, you're efficient enough in your operations to have reduced fees. And zero were deleted. So ultimately, the City Council decides the final tax subsidies. We recommend fees to be updated every four to five years through this comprehensive fee study. You're on Mark, because the last one was done in two thousand and seventeen. This study identified the full cost of service for you, so that's how we present our report. We did make recommendations based on best practice. Our best practice is always the development-related fees should be hundred percent cost recovery. Administrative fees, mostly cost recovery, a hundred percent cost recovery. Is the recreation, which we, it's always a challenge to whether adjust the fees, modify it, and it's always challenged to calculate what the fiscal impact of that is. And now it's up to City Council decide if the fee base should be charged the full cost or should it be subsidized with tax dollars. And reduce subsidies, improve costs. So this is kind of, I guess, the same picture here that I want to give you a summary of this and say that our recommendation would be you have full cost recovery and recover a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Thank you, Chu, for that presentation. So now I'm gonna go over the second part of the presentation, which focuses on Parks and Recs. And I'm gonna, you know, tag team with our Parks and Recs Director, Pam Ugar, so she can give you a little bit more color as to the facilities and athletic fields. So as Chu mentioned to you, the total cost, the total fees that they're recommending to increase through the hundred percent cost allocation and fee study is a hundred and ninety thousand. Now, as is articulated in the report, I know some of you might not have the big thick packet that was included in the agenda report, but that executive summary did mention specifically that they did not recommend particular fee increases to Parks and Recs programming. Now, that's not to say that they do not recommend for us to look at them. It just means that it was outside of their scope for them to go back and look at those personal choice services directly tied to that. And I'll have, we have Eric and Chu here to shed more color on that after the presentation. So the Parks and Recs specific subsidies that were calculated were around two point three million dollars for the year ended two thousand and twenty-three. Now, when we break that down, what particular categories are included in that? So as you see here in the table in blue, it includes camps, trips and tours, contract classes, and sports programs that include adult and youth sports programs. We also have a separate category for rentals, specifically for athletic fields and facility rentals. So as the cost study articulates, for the top category, camps, et cetera, the average cost recovery is thirteen percent currently. So the total cost is around two point two million dollars. For athletic field rentals and facility rentals, the total cost is around four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and we're unable to recover any of the costs included in that. So here's a further breakdown of the athletic field and facility rentals. Athletic fields cost around three hundred and thirty-five thousand, facility rentals around a hundred and five thousand. So why are we waiving fees? So as we took a look back and tried to study the history, particular to these rentals, there were numerous resolutions passed in anywhere between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fourteen. We just highlighted the two that are more specific to these fees and the more current ones, right? There were several that were, you know, what do you call it, revised through these two resolutions. So the resolution six-six-nine-three that was passed, six-six-nine-three that was passed in late two thousand and twelve, specifically called out for a waiver of fees for these facilities. And it formalizes a policy that identifies basically athletic fields and facilities, specifically where the fees were waived. So, and just to point something out, fees were always set through the fee schedule, but through the resolution, they were waived, right? So we do have a fee always articulated in the fee study. We just weren't able to charge. But then we found this other resolution that was passed in late in two thousand and thirteen, resolution sixty-seven forty-three, that we think was intended to revise resolution six-six-nine-three because they're conflicting. And the area specifically conflicting six-six-nine-three was Section five R one, which says facilities should be charged as outlined in the city fee schedule. Now, that was nine years ago. We're unable to see, to locate any further resolutions, ordinance, or anything that would tell us why the fees were continued to be waived, but that has been the ongoing practice. So now I'll turn it over to Pam, so she can talk a little bit more about these two resolutions and how they impact her programming.
Thank you, Angelina. So when I first got here three years ago, one of the questions that I had, because I've been in four other cities as directors, is why are we not renting our facilities out for revenue? It's a little bit of a phenomenon, like that we don't do that. Most cities rent out for weddings, quinceañeras, banquets, those types of things. We don't here. And so I always thought that was just something strange, but there is a resolution that stops us from doing that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and something to think about, especially since we're building a thirty-four million dollar sports, Smith Park Aquatic Center, and it's gonna have a brand-new community center that a lot of people would love to get married in. It's something to start thinking about now to set in motion so that we will be able to rent that out and at least be able to recoup some revenue to cover the costs associated with that building. But currently, right now, resolution six-six-nine-three and six-five-three-oh both state that we are not allowed to rent any of our facilities at all for any birthdays, quinceañeras, weddings, anything. They're very specific. The only thing that we can rent it out for is if someone in our community has a passing and they can do a celebration of life after. That is the only rental that we're allowed to do at this moment. And the thing that concerns me is that for all of us, based on where we're at with the cost recovery is, there is no money to pay for maintenance, there's no money to pay for staffing, there's no money to pay for trash pickup, preventative maintenance. No, A and I cannot, we cannot forecast and pay for things in the future. Things are breaking on us, and we don't have the funding to pay for it because we're not bringing in any revenue to put to the side, to take care of the buildings that we have, to manage what we have currently. If you can go to the next slide. These are some of the things that we spoke about at the last capital improvement project conversation that we had a few weeks ago. These are unfunded projects, and these are potentially things that could be funded if we charged revenue. I'm not saying to charge a full cost recovery, but if we could consider charging for just looking at the fees, we already have the fee structure in there. It's just about implementing and allowing us to charge fees. But right now, we've got one million seven hundred fifty thousand of unfunded projects that are really important to you. These are things to consider in the future. I'm sorry. This is another, this is another set of things that are unfunded as well, so one point nine million. This includes the turf replacement, much needed at the stadium, you know, things like that, because we're not charging for those fees, so we can't maintain what we've got in front of us. Go to the next slide. This is very tiny font, I understand. Sorry about that, but I wanted to let you know that we did a cost analysis around those neighboring cities. And the fees that we have, that we don't charge, they're either in line or lower than our neighboring cities. The majority of our fees are lower than our neighboring cities. So we did, we do have that analysis for you. And then the last one that we have is our current fees and our proposed fees. We propose to charge just a tad bit more if we were allowed to do that with the fee schedule. However, it's still lower than our neighboring cities. And then with that, I will pass it over back to Assistant City Manager.
And so here's another look at just the subsidy by category to further break down the specific categories and the total cost and subsidy to that the city is currently putting in from general fund tax dollars. So you can see in totality, the average current cost recovery for all the categories combined is around nine point four percent. So while we're gonna have some time, we're gonna have a couple of weeks to go through, you know, all council members are gonna have, you know, the fee study that was included with the packet for a couple of weeks to review, to review the fee schedules that are gonna come before you in the study, in the, I'm sorry, in the public hearing on November fourteenth. We'll conduct a normal Prop two eighteen hearing to ask council for adoption of the fee schedule like we do every year. That will be the fee study that was recommended by Revenue Cost Specialist. What we want to do here is seek council direction to explore discontinuing the fee waiver in order to comply with the resolution currently in place. That's first. And then Pam and the rest of us will work on crafting a resolution for City Council for future consideration that basically revises the policy for the restriction on city facilities, uses, and rentals. So those are the two items that we would ask for council to allow us to bring back to you. The public hearing will bring forward the fees that are identified in the report and fee recommendations specific for the Parks and Recs component. At that time, we can approve them all. We can, you know, carve some out and ask to look at the Parks and Recs ones at that time. And so the cost and fee study, the fee schedules are approved every year by council. This was a more in-depth analysis that, you know, that is best practice for the city to follow. And with that, I'll end the presentation, and we'll welcome any questions and comments you might have.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Assistant City Manager Angelina Garcia, Director Ugar, thank you. And Mr. Tai, thank you very much for that presentation. We do have a couple of questions, if we want to start off with Councilmember Garcia and work our way.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. We really appreciate this. There's, I'm kind of, there's two things here. Number one, I would like to digest this fees right here. It's the first time I'm looking at this, and I would like to get a better grasp of what this is gonna mean, especially when you're looking at per-hour rental of lights. When you look at the time changes, if somebody is utilizing any of our facilities, that's gonna add up very quickly. And then you multiply that by three or four nights a week, maybe even five. So number one, I gotta look back at these fees. However, I did speak to some of the sports organizations. Not all of them, I didn't get a chance to make the full circle. Some of them are open, as long as we're not gonna break the bank, we're gonna do something outrageous. However, if we do something, they're asking that we do it upfront so they'll know how to charge that individual, particularly when it comes to non-residents in the city of Pico Rivera. So there wasn't really any opposition. However, on the flip side of that, we also are mindful that there's those families who have hardship and that we need to monitor and be supportive in that area as well. And thank God for the play pass that the city moved a while back. That's been quite successful to help many families, especially when you have multiple kids playing a sport. I personally, I need to digest this a little bit further. That's my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Dr. Sanchez.
I have a question. First, the, with the list of fees for certain services, what are some examples of the water, for instance? Is that the fee, like if someone pays a late bill? Is that the amount? Is there anything else that is, that those fees come from?
Yes, so the water fees are not going to be like the water rate fees that are set through a different process, right? For the water consumption rates. These are more for the other ancillary fees that are outside of, like the flat fee that's charged for pipes.
Water usage.
Water usage, yeah.
Thank you. My comments in that I have received some requests to use sports fields, to rent sports fields. So I think particularly for tournaments or non-youth events, I think that has been a request that's come probably to the Parks Department as well. So I think, you know, if this is a way we can make a good revenue, I would support that. But I do also think that our parks are a play space and our children and our residents should be priority and also consider subsidies for our residents and also considering low-income situations that might occur. In addition, perhaps this is another study session, but including the water bills, if we have some type of subsidy where we can have the fees applied to, let's say a senior has an emergency and they have a water, you know, pipe burst and they have a huge bill, or they have some situation that where we can help to subsidize low-income or senior. I know that we can't charge them based off of the water rates. We can't charge a user for that, but if we can find some type of subsidy for low-income or seniors, I think that we need to consider that. And that's just my feedback. I think prioritizing our residents and our children, our youth programs is important.
So Councilmember Dr. Sanchez, we will bring back the, a full listing of the subsidy programs that we do provide, particular to the water utility for seniors, for low-income, and other opportunities that are provided by the state. And I think there are a few, one or two that might be provided on the federal level as well.
Great, great. And then in addition, I think that we did a study, the parking study. And for instance, our golf course, I see people parking, they're not using the golf course, but they're riding the bikes along the trail and charging parking fees. We have a lot of our public, our public city-owned parking spaces could potentially be another source to charge a user fee that they're, you know, using our space, our public space. That might be another area where we can find more revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protim Lara.
Great, thank you for the information. First, right off the bat, I'd like to endorse exploring discontinuing the fee waiver in order to comply with the resolution sixty-seven forty-three. And then the second staff recommendation, I would be in favor of bringing forward a resolution to City Council to explore eliminating restrictions for use of facilities to provide fair and equitable use for residents in the city. In regards to some of our spaces, I mean, as Director Ugar brought out, you know, here we're going to update and expand the facility there at Smith Park. And when we went through and designed it, in the back of, I know Director Ugar's mind, some of the things she was pointing out was, well, we um, some of the things she was pointing out was, well, we can use this for, for weddings, we can use this for pool parties, we can use this ways to offset and mitigate some of the costs that you're go- you're not gonna turn a net positive off that place, right? And, and we completely understand that. But if we can mitigate some of the expense related to that, then that's a positive. Um, it's gonna take me some time, like my other colleagues digest this information. I, I'd like to meet with staff um, just one-on-one, uh, just to kinda have some things explained to me and, and I, right, just knee-jerk reaction, I don't think, I, I appreciate the examples of the neighboring cities, like for, just hypothetical, if we're charging twenty-five dollars, but a neighboring city is charging fifty, I don't think I'd, I'd be, I'd wanna match. I think I'd wanna fall somewhat slightly behind that, but I think some increase is warranted. Um, keeping in mind with uh, Councilmember Garcia, because I know he has a really strong pulse on a lot of the youth groups. You know, it, from his comment, it seems like some of them are okay with that, I think they are. But I think his, his comment's prudent and we should all listen to it. I think they wanna be told ahead of time, right? Of what these fees, so then they can plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Camacho.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation and information. Um, it's always fun to go through these exercises. Um, question in regards to on, just to make sure I'm clear. So we are subsidizing two point six million, uh, which is, if we did a full cost recovery, that's what we're trying to get to, a hundred percent.
Two hundred percent, yes, but again, that does not include uh, a lot of the uh, rental facilities uh, uh, fees that are being looked at right now by Parks and Recs. So that's not all in, it could be more.
Okay, so, so what is all in here then?
The, all in there, the two point six is for um, the three hundred thousand, um, let me, let me-
As I have, I, I-
Let me turn it over to Eric's for a more educated, uh, educated answer.
I've seen page eleven and says um, Building, City Clerk, Finance, Planning, Parks and Recs, Public Safety, Public Works, Water. Total profit would be two point eight, but over here on red it says two point six in annual subsidy.
Yes, um, good evening, I'm Eric Johnson, RCS, uh, Councilmember. We're showing currently a two point eight million dollar subsidy. Two point three million of that is related to recreation. And so we're not think, we're not recommending any new revenues in recreation, we're not talking about a hundred percent cost recovery there. The other areas, it's primarily cost rec- a hundred percent cost recovery. So in the other areas, we feel that if you adopted all the recommendations in here and took into account that some fees only happen once every three, four years. And so we want to be conservative in our revenue estimates. So we estimated one hundred ninety thousand dollars in possible new revenue annually if all the recommendations in here were, were approved.
So the, so, okay, so we're only a hundred ninety thousand would be what we would if we were to do all recommendations, which, I mean, I get all these other lists of unfunded projects, but this two hundred thousand is not gonna get us anywhere near any of these that you listed, so.
It's a start and it's, it is an annual number, so.
And this is not necessarily for, let's cost recover to fund projects, it's cost recover to help with the operations, right? So, so we really didn't need to go over these unfunded necessarily as it's tied in here, right?
Right, and, and the difference is on the rental side, for the facility rental and the field rentals, those are exempt from the cost reasonably borne test. You can charge, because it's a rental of a city asset, you can charge whatever the market's willing to bear. And so if, if you can, if you can charge a thousand dollars an hour to rent the council chamber, you're allowed to do so. If people are willing to pay.
I guess I was trying to, trying to get the, the correlation between the unfunded projects that we're all aware of as it relates to this cost recovery, as it, if any funding was, right, which in essence, there is no correlation other than, than um, what we need to do is just uh, increase fees to costs, do some cost recoveries.
Right, yeah, there, there's the two different pieces of it, there's the non-recreation fees, the non-facility and field rental fees. And that's for, as you mentioned, for recovery of the staff that's doing the work. Um, and then the other piece, because that's more of a rental fee and you can use that to help the revenue for that, to help fund these improvements and to help fund, fund the ongoing maintenance of the facilities and the fields.
Understood. And it's good to hear that um, when the non-recreational, we're doing very well considering. So that's, that's, that's great, um, and always mindful. Um, you know, part of the reasons we do these, as you mentioned, in Parks and Recs, we're never going to do a full cost recovery, because in essence, as a community, as a city, we tend to subsidize our parks and that's part of, differentiates one community from the other of how much we support those uh, organizations. And we came to the issue of, of providing this waiver to city organizations. And so although we've always wanted to do full cost recovery, the value of living in Pico de Vero or being part of our, our youth programs is that, you know, we don't necessarily charge an arm and a leg for it, right? So, so that's a plus, I think, in itself of these resolutions. As far as city facilities, I'm open to figuring additional um, ways to generate revenue. I know as my colleague mentioned, when we were talking about the, the design of the pool, of potential uses of it. Um, and I think one of the reasons why we shied away from rentals of the facilities, because especially quinceañeras, that would be opposed to quinceañeras, by the way. Um, only on the best, you know, on the, uh, on the basis that the, 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 and we were just looking at this at, at our now turf, the Smith Park Field, and how the uses of it, because we have so much usage, the wear and tear of these facilities is because of the usage. So if we increase the usage, are we really going to recover that, that, uh, that fee? Or operations or maintenance? Or are we just gonna add more cost to the maintenance, because we have more usage? And in essence, we're just kinda breaking even, if you will. So I think weddings are good, I think um, you know, other gatherings are well, but I think that I would be very specific as to all of those potential ones, so. Um, I always mention that, hey, outside groups should be charged more. Uh, outside residents should be charged more. Uh, parking fees, you know, are something to consider. You know, we're here to, you know, support our community and our residents and we have a lot of usage. And that's good stuff, but I think we need to really look at those dynamics. So I, I'm not necessarily ready to make a recommendation or for you to move forward. I think we need to look at this, have, as my colleague mentioned, have some more one-on-ones with our city manager, have some more detailed conversations with them, maybe some committee gatherings. But uh, there's just so much in here that, that for us, for me to say, let's waive uh, what was worked and/or let's increase the uses of a facility, I don't know if I'm ready for that.
Okay, so I think what we can do, uh, Mr. City Manager, is um, what we heard, what I heard you say, what we heard you say is the cost and fee study as proposed, which includes a fee uh, increase of a hundred and ninety thousand, which is just to, to recover the normal costs that are, that are uh, included in the report, that will bring um, to you on November fourteenth for a public hearing. The waiver and uh, the second item for a revised resolution for the uh, facilities, as well as separate fee schedules for the items that Pam um, mentioned for the, for the rentals, will be brought forward at a separate date after further uh, exploration.
I, I would, I would say that we should not lock in a date of bringing any item forward until we have our meetings with our city manager and then we better understand this to determine whether that's even a direction we wanna go to, unless my colleagues feel otherwise.
Mr. Mayor, if I just may, real quick.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Before we, we move on that, um, the, the fees that I'm looking at right here, we will have input on what we want, would we entertain a flat fee versus an hourly base?
We could bring forward uh-
Because I'm looking at the, where we, a flat fee, you know, just, and we will have that type of dialogue and input moving forward, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes.
Yeah, we could even entertain a conversation where it is a flat fee for uh, our local sports organizations and maybe a, an hourly rate for outside organizations. So those are some things that we can look into.
Got it. Council, uh, Mayor Protim, followed by myself.
Thank you, I just, I wanted to follow up with, on my, on my colleague's uh, question. Is there, you wanna bring this back November fourteenth? Is there a particular reason, is that date set in stone? Are we trying to meet a deadline or anything, or can we continue to work on this?
No, we could continue to work. I think uh, after our one-on-ones, I think we could maybe get council more comfortable with at least the force, portion of it. And if that is determined that we're okay with it collectively, um, we can move that item forward. If thought, we can, you know, move it at another date.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Okay, that concludes our presentation and-
Mayor.
Sure, so uh, I, I collectively agree with all the uh, like, council members. Uh, I do like the fact that we have the opportunity to explore and adjust our, our fees. I think that's important, uh, as, as costs go up. And I think the opportunity to open up our facilities so that uh, we keep the festivities within our community, rather than uh, having individuals or residents spend in outside uh, businesses, rather have that come in, into play here. I, I do like the fact that uh, Councilmember Sanchez uh, discussed and exploring the idea of using some type of user fee for the uh, parking lots that are city-owned, especially for those who are non-residents, right? There is a possibility there. And I also appreciate the fact that we're gonna have the, those one-on-one meetings with staff, because it's a lot to digest and we have the opportunity to do that one-on-one sit-down. So uh, with that being said, I do appreciate that you're anticipating um, higher costs and we're looking to curtail those higher costs. And uh, with that being said, uh, Mr. City Manager, you recommend that we file and receive?
Yes, receive and file.
Okay, very good.
If I may, one, one last comment that I wanna um, reiterate is, I don't think it should be a blanket um, increase over, up to eighty-five percent. So for instance, you have adult sports games. I think our go-getter's senior softball league, their seniors retired on a fixed income. Um, I don't think it's fair to increase that one. But the men softball leagues, they're working, they're making good money still. By all means, they may be able to afford that more than a senior. So I think that if we can consider that, as well as the childcare camps, those are greatly in need and we always have a waitlist for that, I know that. However, um, considering parents that have multiple children and um, of course, that's a, a great need, I know, um, in our, in our, in our community. So I think we have to kinda look through each program, rather than just say, all adult programs, we're gonna increase them. We have to consider the low income and the children, uh, the youth programs.
Thank you, Councilmember Dr. Sanchez. And with that, Mr. City Manager, we're good to adjourn the study session?
Yes.
All right, then we're gonna do a five-minute break before we start the regular council meeting. All right, welcome to the city council meeting for October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, now, Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda today?
Yes, I believe there's a, a addition of a presentation that Councilwoman Sanchez, I think she actually wants to move that to the next meeting, correct? Okay. No changes, Mayor.
No changes, very good. And now, Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call blaze?
Councilmember Commissioner Dr. Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Camacho?
Here.
Mayor Proton, Vice Chair Laura?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Lutz?
Here.
All here.
Very good, thank you for that. And our Commissioners in attendance are Gloria Agiri, our Parks and Recreation Commissioner, and our Veterans Commissioner, Bobby Tanner. And with that, our invocation is going to be provided by our Veterans Commissioner, Bobby Tanner, followed by our flag salute, our Parks and Recreation Commissioner Gloria Agiri. And Ms. Tanner, if you kindly lead us into invocation.
Thank you and good evening. We gather here today with intent to do good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. We may, may our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioners for that. And now, moving on to a special presentation. It is a home ownership program that is offered to potential homeowners, new homeowners in the city of Pico Rivera, and the presentation is going to be provided by Armando Gonzalez of Century Twenty-One All-Stars, Pico Rivera. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good afternoon. First of all, thank you so much for allowing me to be here. I am very happy to be here because we have a great program that we are offering for the residents of Pico Rivera. Just a little feedback, I'm from Century Twenty-One All-Stars here on Telegraph Road in Pico Rivera. I've been a Realtor broker there for, I'm going to say about thirteen, fourteen years. And our office has always given back. We actually, one year built three homes in Mexico City, we've helped home orphanage, an orphanage with shoes, cancer, we, we give back, especially without a vocation, especially doing good works, and that's what we want to do. So this time, I'm excited to give back, our office is going to give back to a lucky resident of Pico Rivera. Our owner, Joseph Yescusa, and thus came together and said, how can we give back to the city of Pico Rivera? So what we decided to do is, we are going to gift one lucky family in Pico Rivera, closing costs and down payment up to a purchase price of seven hundred thousand. It's a one-hundred percent gift, okay, for some lucky resident of Pico Rivera. We do have some criteria. First of all, the person has to be a resident of Pico Rivera for the last two years, they cannot own a home, they could not have owned a home for the last five, okay? The maximum purchase price is going to be seven hundred thousand. We will gift the down payment up to three and a half percent, which is an FHA guideline, plus all the closing cost. This, this gift cannot be transferred to another person, it has to be to the family. We do have applications here, we have them at the office. For all the people that, that aren't here right now, you could go to our website at Century Twenty-One All-Stars, download an application, fill it out, and you could email it back to allstarsgivesback@centurytwentyoneallstars. All that information is on the flyers here, and as well as you could walk into the office and pick one up. Now, we are looking for a family with a story that's in need, right? We don't want somebody that has the funds at home just as a want-to-use-er money. We're looking for somebody in need. So we are going to be having an interview with these people, they are going to come in, and once again, it's a one-hundred percent gift. We do have a list of lenders that we're going to be working with, and cosigners are allowable as well. So we're excited to say this, and we're also thankful for the city for backing us with this program. And if anybody has any questions, they can reach out at the office or grab a flyer here of the application, and we're here to help.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. We really do appreciate our local businesses reaching out to the community and giving back. And, you know, in essence, if you take a look at that percentage of money that is going to be given as a gift for a potential new homeowner, that's upwards of thirty-three thousand dollars. That's going to be very helpful for someone to finally have home ownership and build that generational wealth in our community. So thanks again to Century Twenty-One.
Yeah, and one last thing I forgot to add, we do have a workshop on October twenty-fifth at the office from six to seven, and we just added another one on September, Saturday, sorry, Saturday, November eleventh at eleven a.m. So if you want to come directly, get more information, you could come to the workshops, they will be held at the office at nine-one-five-five Telegraph Road, Pico Rivera. Thank you once again.
Yes, and then now we can hand it over to my colleagues so they can give a thanks.
Well, thank you, Armando, for coming, and it's, it's great. I just want to highlight a couple of things. One is that, it's, it's right, many Realtors and real estate agents give here in their community, but I have to say that Century Twenty-One All-Stars over the years has definitely shown their true contribution to Pico Rivera amongst many other communities. And so when this idea came to us by, by Joe and saying, hey, we're willing to do the closing costs, and we're willing to do the deposit for a Pico Rivera resident, but if you didn't highlight, but one of the things that was important, it was to buy a home in Pico Rivera.
Exactly, that is right. The home has to be purchased in Pico Rivera, sorry, forgot that.
Before it was outside and we were able to bring it back. So, so, so again, one, I appreciate the generosity from Joe and company, and, and also, we have to get the word out. I'm sure there's a great, lucky family out there that is in true need and has the requirements to make this happen. So again, I applaud you for that, and it's up to us now to get the word out and get the right family into that home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor Proton?
Great, thank you. And then, once you find that family, if you could bring them, we'd love to make sure we do a fitting photograph and kind of highlight the fact that, you know, Century Twenty-One All-Stars were involved behind this. I think this is, this is a great opportunity for a family. Thank you for doing this.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
No question, thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the grand architect of the universe for Century Twenty-One All-Stars. This is an amazing gift, so God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And, and we look forward, for Century Twenty-One to raise the bar for potentially other businesses in the city to do the same, to help our residents. Thanks again to you and Mr. Yescusa.
Thank you so much. You guys have a good evening.
Now, moving on to the next item, which is our public hearing, we have none at this time, but we will move on to public comments, and we have several written public comments. We'll start off with the first one and remind everyone that you have a three-minute time limit. And the first one is by Lauren Talbot, giving library updates. And Ms. Talbot, if you kindly come up to the lectern.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Lauren Talbot, and I'm the Community Library Manager at the Pico Rivera Library and the Rivera Library. We have some great programs coming up in November. Our mini painters program is back this Friday, October twenty-seventh, at eleven a.m. at the Pico Rivera Library. Kids ages two to five will be painting leaves and working on their small motor skills. We're having a weaving program for kids on Tuesday, November seventh, at four-thirty p.m. at the Pico Rivera Library. We have looms, yarn, and the kids are going to learn about weaving and different cultures that do art that way. Both the Pico Rivera Library and the Rivera Library will be closed on Friday, November tenth, and Saturday, November eleventh, for Veterans Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Talbot. Now, if we can kindly have Mr. John Soto come up to the lectern. Mr. Soto, you have three minutes.
Greetings, Mayor, Councilmembers, and residents. As a reminder, we are a land of laws and the rule of law. This is where we have been stating the city for the last ten months. In our case, it is the City Municipal Code, the County Municipal Code, and Penal Code four fifteen-two. We have asked for a letter of resolution stating only that the city adhered to these laws and to the contract the city has with the Pico Rivera Golf Course. In all honesty, a letter of resolution should be easy to draft because you are ethically bound to adhere to laws in the contract. Simply put, we do not need to be governed led by lawlessness. It is the government's responsibility, both elected, staff members, et cetera, to live by these principles. It would be awful to read a headline in the papers or in social media posts that states lawless Pico Rivera wants to be a destination city. You need to remember that all the work, all you work for the citizens of Pico Rivera and not the other way around. When you took government positions, both elected, staff members, et cetera, you agreed to by, by Resolution seven zero nine eight. It is a code of conduct that you all agree to govern by. The resolution states many things, great things, including Section Two, comply with the law, and Section Seven, conflicts of interest. There's a lot of other good stuff in there, too. In actuality, if you lived by these laws, the contract, and the Resolution seven zero nine eight, there would no, be no need for a separate resolution. As for the letter of apology, we will leave that to your conscience. Don't let your egos get in the way. As part of Sidney Powell's and other plea agreements in the last weeks, they had to write a letter of apology to the citizens of Georgia for their wrongdoings. Well, we are done trying to help you do the right thing, and it is not even costing you a cent. A lawsuit, however, can cost the city a lot of money and be embarrassing. On a side issue, we understand the camera system is in the works of the golf course. Our neighborhood has been asking for this for a couple of years. We were working with Kylie Torres, and I don't know what happened to her, but she was so responsive to everything we asked. We would like cameras to also be placed in all parts of the parking lot as a deterrent to guys urinating in the parking lot. We could see guys urinating from our homes. One neighbor will be sending pictures, lots of pictures. Signs haven't worked, and the bogan villas next to the fence are not growing fast enough in some areas. Also, we have requested the parking lot fence be raised two feet. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto, for your comment. Now, if we can kindly have Mr. John Carl come up to the lectern. Mr. Carl, you have three minutes. Your three minutes start now.
Thank you for your time. I'm a fairly new resident to the city of Pico Rivera, and I live around Beverly and Rosemead, and I was hit when you guys were doing the expansion on that street, and it created chaos for me and my family. I requested and reached out to the city quite a bit. I involve the Councilmember Gustavo for some help. He brought in the City Manager, and I wanted to thank both of you for the great help that you guys provided, me and my family, in taking care of all the issues that we were faced with. Also, I'd like to say thank you to Jonathan Flores and Jordan Perez, who always reached out and tried to help, and that was based because you guys brought them in to help me out with what we were facing. So it's just me saying thank you, specifically to these two gentlemen and these two other gentlemen that I called out for helping me out. I just, I'm really glad that the city does something really good for some residents, and I, I hope any resident that reaches out gets the kind of help that I got. So thank you very much to both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. And our next public comment is by Beatrice Seratin. Ms. Beatrice Seratin, if you kindly come up to the lectern, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm a resident of Pico Rivera, I've been a resident of Pico Rivera for over thirty years. My husband grew up in Pico Rivera, and we have grave concerns, in particular about the vendors on Rosemead Boulevard between Gallatin and San Gabriel Boulevard. And I know some of that isn't part of Pico Rivera, but it is feeling now down onto where they're now setting up on a daily basis, a weekend basis, and there's been a couple of times that I've been driving through there, and I'm almost gotten rear-ended because the vendors for the park, then people will pull over to buy from them. And I'm just wondering, is there not some kind of ordinance that can address this? I have called the different police departments at different times and reported this to them, and they've come out, the CHP, to see what's going on. So that's one concern that I have. Another concern that I have is the speeding of cars on Beverly Boulevard. In particular, I live right off of Beverly Boulevard between Rosemead and Durfee. And so, especially for the last three or four years, you can hear the cars just zoom by. There used to be a police officer there on a motorcycle, and for a while, they had one of those cars with, really, it wasn't a policeman in there, but just the car, police car kind of there. But now, I don't see that anymore. So that is, I just, for the safety of our citizens of this city, I am really concerned and before something really happens on both of those issues that can affect our residents of, for the safety, like I said, of Pico Rivera. And then the third thing is, I'm just wondering, as far as just how our city looks and that we keep up our values of our homes, Christmas lights, decorations are left up all year long, and I'm just wondering if there's some kind of ordinance that addresses that and what we can do to just have people, just try to, you know, have, you know, concerns and want to keep our community looking nice so that we can compete with the values. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seratin. We'll have someone reach out to you.
Thank you.
The next public comment is Mario Rosas. Mr. Rosas, if you kindly come up to the lectern. And sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good evening, City Manager, Mayor Council, Captain, Staff of Pico Rivera. My name is Mario Rosas, and I'm right here to present you guys over two hundred signatures from my neighbors from Dillon Avenue, Lindsay Avenue, and Lehman Avenue, in between Beverly Boulevard and Beverly Road. We have in a meeting, thanks for, for you guys to come to that meeting. It was so amazing. Everybody sends gratitude for you guys showing up. The reason that I'm here is to present this in order to ask for a better street lighting, speed bumps to slow the traffic, stop sign in the corner of Arma, in the corner of Lehman and Arma Street, and if we can get more law enforcement also, especially at nighttime, when it's more, when some people takes advantage of the, of the dark hours. We urge you, please, to put our safety as a priority. We have been patiently waiting for this request to be completed for four years, and we haven't got anything done yet. Take in mind that we trust you, that we elected you. We think that safety is more important than beauty, but we need both. So we appreciate if you try to beautify the city, but flowers in the median are basically useless if we don't feel safe around those flowers. Thank you for all everything that you do. Thank you for your effort, Captain. You have no idea how many people after the meeting got to trust you, and we hope that we can get and keep getting more meetings of that kind. And I invite everybody, instead of attacking each other, to try to act as a one. Nobody is better than nobody, and we all are belong of this city, and we can do great things in our city without basically putting nobody in the eye or nothing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rosas. Now, the next public comment is Andrew Lopez. Mr. Lopez, if you can kindly come up to the lectern, you have three minutes.
Thank you, City Council. I'm here to show concern as a citizen of Pico Rivera and support Mario in his, in his efforts to get more street lighting, get, get better street lighting, speed bumps and everything. As a concerned citizen, I, I sometimes don't feel safe, and I see speeding cars coming through. I live on Lehman Avenue. There's always speeding cars when there's a lot of traffic on Rosemead. A lot of cars, a lot of trucks go right through our street. I wake up at two in the morning to get up for work, to go to work early, and there are some times where the lighting's not visible enough, you see a lot of dark spots and stuff, and there's been several times where we see people and we barely see them, and they're like pretty close, and we don't know what their intentions are or anything like that. It's just, that's what I'm concerned about and stuff, and if you guys can consider that, better, better lighting, better, and also some speed bumps and, and also some more stop, stop signs in those areas where cars are just going, spinning through, they can, I don't, if they come out too, too fast, they can hit cars. My dad's car was hit one time because a car was speeding through real fast, the turn, lost control, and thank God he wasn't in the car, or he wasn't on the side of the car, but I don't want anything to happen to, to my family or anybody else, else's family because of that. And yeah, that's my closing statement. Thank you for, thank you, Councilmembers, also for, who came for... Thank you for, thank you council members also for, who came for the meeting. We very much appreciate you guys coming and hearing our, all our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And now our next, uh, public comment is, uh, Mr. Jesus Lopez. Señor Jesus Lopez? Mr. Lopez will come up to the lectern and if he so chooses.
Good evening, everybody.
Oh, very good.
My name is Jesus Lopez. I lived in, um, uh, Lehman for twenty-five years. And I only come in for support, our community, you know, for the petition we're doing. That's, I'm here. Thank you.
Tengo entendido que iba a hablar en español, sí.
Oh.
¿Quiere hablar en español?
No, no, I'm fine.
Sigue su tiempo.
I'm fine. It's okay.
Yeah, if, if you.
Only come and support my.
Okay. If you feel comfortable speaking in Spanish, uh, you have the right to do so.
Oh, I'm fine.
Very good.
That's why I say, you know, I come and support my friends, you know, for my neighborhood. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Thank you for your public comment. And, uh, Madam City Clerk, do we have any other, uh, public comments, uh, through email?
There were none received, Mayor.
Very good. So we'll go ahead and close up the public, uh, comments. And now we're going to move on to our consent calendar items. Uh, and that is, uh, items one through seven, as well as our water authority. Items eight through ten. And if we can.
So move as recommended.
Very good.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first by Councilmember Camacho, a second by Mayor Protem Laura. And, uh, do we have any discussion? Okay, very good. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Commissioners, Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Commissioner Camacho?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vice Chair Lara?
Yes.
Mayor President Lutz?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you for that. We'll move on now to the regular agenda. The regular agenda is item number eleven. And that's approve a master service agreement with Sound Thinking Inc. for a one-year pilot program. And, uh, Mr. City Manager, do we have a presentation on this item?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we do. At this time, I'd like to bring up, uh, Phil Marquez, our Public Safety Coordinator.
Good evening, council members. Appreciate you, uh, you guys having me here tonight and I'm excited to talk about this, uh, technology as, uh, ShotSpotter. Uh, I remember about twenty years ago, but to compare the technology from then till now would be unfair. But, but a little bit of background. Over the past two years, the Sheriff's Department has responded to an increased number of calls for service, reporting shots fired and incidents of gun-related crimes. The average time it takes the Sheriff's Department to receive a call and its dispatch center dispatching officer with the pertinent information and have officers arrive on location can sometimes take several minutes. These minutes can prove critical if a victim is struck by this gunfire that was reported. Little bit of background on, uh, the ShotSpotter technology. It's a, it's a gunfire detection analysis and alert system which enhances the Sheriff's Department response and investigation. The sensor can detect loud impulsive sounds. Example would be a gunshot which is, which will generate a recorded incident. The system uses sound triangulation determine and display the actual shot location with a number of rounds and sequence in which they were fired within eighty-two, within an eighty-two foot radius. Sound is sent to ShotSpotter Incident Review Center, RIRC. Undergoes two phases of review to determine if it is a legitimate gunfire or if it was generated from another source. Once it is confirmed the sounds were gunfire, Sheriff's Department deputies are notified of the gunfire via digital application to their smartphone or similar device. And the entire process occurs within sixty seconds or less. Little more background on the ShotSpotter technology has showed to deter shootings in the area that has subscribed to the ShotSpotter technology. Prevents deputies from investigating or responding to non-gunshot incidents such as fireworks and another loud boom or bang. Get a little bit further into that right there on that particular point is deputies are still going to respond to, uh, uh, um, firework calls and things like that. But you respond a different way. When you know there's gunshots, you respond a different way as knowing it would be fireworks. Can also detect if there are multiple firearms involved, what types of firearm was involved. An example would be if it's a fully automatic weapon or a high capacity. And it provides map location of incidents and optional turn-by-turn instructions to the location. And will provide a court admissible, uh, detailed forensic report for an OIS incident, which is an officer-involved shooting. And upon request for any homicides. Pilot program or the one-year pilot program, its staff has negotiated a one-square-mile service area for one, for a one-year term for forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars as evidenced in the master service agreement. We're very proud also to have successfully worked with the representatives at Sound Thinking to help secure a second one-square-mile service area at no additional cost. The second square mile will be at no cost for a period of six months between, uh, January and June of twenty twenty-four to determine the need for that second location. The staff and coordination with the public, Public Safety Coordinator and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department will continuously monitor the effectiveness of the second location and provide the City Council a recommendation as to whether to keep that second location. And if it would be okay at this time with council, I would like to introduce Terry Green. She's a representative of Sound Thinking. She will dive deeper into this, uh, ShotSpotter technology. And once she's done, we'll then open it up for questions. Thank you.
Hi, good mor, uh, good af, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Terry Green. Uh, they'll put up my presentation here shortly and hopefully this will allow me to get through it. Um, I am the Western States Director for Western, for, for Sound Thinking, which is formerly known as ShotSpotter. ShotSpotter is still the name of our gunshot detection, uh, service, which we're trying to bring to your city to keep your city safer and to help your deputies respond to gunfire a lot faster. Rich Ray's may be on the, uh, phone version if you have a Zoom session. I don't see him, so I assume he's on, but I'll be doing the speaking. Uh, let me see if this, if I can get this to move. Just a little bit of background. We have been around for twenty-seven years. It was deployed back twenty years ago, I believe, before all the really neat things that we've added. And, uh, the, the, um, uh, sentry station with the LA County Sheriff used it. We have forty patents on the technology. We're always improving our sensors and our ability to locate accurately gunfire, which is difficult. Um, ninety-nine percent customer retention over a hundred and fifty cities that use ShotSpotter, both small and large cities. Uh, a thousand plus miles under contract. That means we cover that much with our sensors. And then we offer live support throughout the year. The impact of gun violence, just, and I'm sorry, these are out of order. Uh, I'm just going to put these up on the screen here, sorry. Uh, just the community's sense of safety, uh, proliferation of ghost guns. We're hearing about them. They're easy to make. They're easy to manufacture. They're everywhere. And our system can help locate gunfire. A lot of times ghost guns are found as a result of a ShotSpotter alert. We've had a lot of success stories from our cities such as Paris, a Riverside County Sheriff's, uh, contract that went live last year. Uh, the location information that you may get from a nine-one-one call may not be accurate. It's really difficult, if you've ever heard gunfire, to really locate it. And that's what we do really well. And a lot of times gunfire is just not reported at all. And I have another screen to talk about the reasons. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then poor location, uh, that's, that's a problem maybe because it takes time for the deputies, when they may be under resource, to find a victim or find someone, someone may be bleeding out. And there's so many reasons to bring the police to or the deputies to, uh, victims faster. And often we find evidence, you know, we might, might be shell casings, which can be used to determine if that gun that fired those casings has been used in other crimes. And there's a federal database that manages that. Uh, the, the biggest challenge is that there's been a study, several studies, that show a minimum of eighty percent of gunfire goes unreported. A lot of people find that to be an interesting statistic because we all feel that everyone calls nine-one-one, especially for gunfire. But I know personally, when I hear gunfire, I wait, is there another one? Ah, someone else probably called. So let me take you to the next screen and tell you the four common reasons why people don't call nine-one-one. One, they're not sure it's gunfire and they don't want to waste time. It might be fireworks. It might be a loud noise and they don't call. Retaliation, worried about calling, having someone come to their home. They know that they called. It, it often happens where they don't call. Redundancy, oh, you know what? My neighbor probably called. She calls on everything. I'm sure she called. And the last is resignation, you know, why call? They don't show. And a lot of times it's because you just don't know about the gunfire because of this reason here. Uh, and that's, that study is actually collaborated or corroborated by our system because we'll take, um, your call for service data and compare it to our ShotSpotter alerts. And we'll tell you, did you get a call for service? Did you get one at all? How many minutes later that it, did it, did it get dispatched? Uh, and then, uh, whether it was accurate or not. So there's a lot we can do on the statistics for you. This won't take too long, so I apologize. But if there is someone that is shot, uh, by, by any gun, time is tissue. That is this common, you know, any minute that you can save and get a victim to the hospital or have a deputy respond with a tourniquet while they await the, uh, ambulance services to arrive can save their life. And we have so many stories about ShotSpotters helping, ShotSpotter helping deputies save lives. Uh, and, and a lot of times, since we're deploying within less than sixty seconds, uh, from, from the moment the gun is fired, we're able to deploy the, the details to the deputies. They can oftentimes be en route and, and respond before a nine-one-one call even comes in. This is the easiest way to show how this works and bear with me. Oh, he's going to play it. It's two minutes.
Starts with acoustic sensors that are placed on buildings or lamp posts throughout a neighborhood. If a gun is fired anywhere in the area, multiple sensors detect and timestamp the sound. The precise location of the gunshot is determined based on the amount of time it takes for the sound of the gunshot to travel to each individual sensor, effectively triangulating the sound. The exact location of the detected gunshot is indicated by a dot on a map. Once an alert is generated, it is immediately sent to our IRC or Incident Review Center, where trained acoustic experts then analyze each incident in mere seconds, determining if the sound is gunfire. ShotSpotter acoustic analysts receive extensive training on reviewing and classifying gunfire by distinguishing gunshots from other impulsive sounds that are not gunshots. In addition, they're trained to append additional contextual information such as multiple shooter alerts or full automatic weapons alerts that can prove to be essential tactical intelligence for law enforcement agencies responding to these crimes. The entire transaction takes place in less than sixty seconds.
Pretty impressive, right? I could have shown you thirty-seven slides or just shown you the two-minute video and I chose the video. Um, what comes with the ShotSpotter system is insight and it's essentially a lot of the same information, the real-time gunfire, but also real-time and historical gunfire so that we can help you, uh, determine if gunfire is going up, shootings are going up or the number of rounds are going up. Sometimes gunfire goes down, but number of rounds go up, especially as we have these, these Glock switches and things that are coming into the market illegally most often. Scorecards for law enforcement that show how we're performing. Uh, analytical reports and the ability to, uh, to export the data. And we'll create dashboards for you all to monitor the type of data that you want to monitor and see, you know, how it's performing for you. Uh, and then collaboration tools and those detailed forensic reports which stand up in court. And part of the service is that we will help you defend yourselves in court, especially if it's a, an OIS homicide. So it's part of the service. An example of a dashboard that we created and that we do for all of our clients is showing where gunfire has occurred in or, in or around schools. And we rank them as the ones that are most vulnerable to gunfire. And, and then behind the scenes, we have days and times a week that it's affecting schools. But really, there's a whole program that we have that's part of our solution, which is called Data for Good. Taking that gunshot data and showing you how, like times of day, days of weeks, week, um, and, and then making it available to outreach. If you have outreach groups or, uh, offices of violence prevention, um, it's, it's able, you can work with the superintendents of the schools, letting them know where gunfire might be affecting some of their student population. Maybe the kids are acting out. And this is a way for you to really just see it, decide or determine how you can use that data for good. And we'll create dashboards in any fashion for you as part of our service. Just something I wanted to touch on, some people say, or they're concerned about, you know, ShotSpotter listening, the, the sensors listening to conversations. We've been audited by third parties and really there's a low risk of anything. And our sensors are triggered by something that's over a hundred and twenty decibels. So really it can't pick up conversations. And we snip the, 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 it, it's triggered by a loud impulsive sound like a gunshot. And we only capture the second before and the second after. And then we, 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 um, within twenty-four hours, delete everything. The twenty-four hours is to allow us sometimes, sometimes we are not, we're not perfect, but we're very close to perfect. We have with our Incident Review Center about a ninety-seven to ninety-nine and often a hundred percent accuracy. But we do make mistakes and it gives, it gives us time to hear from the, from the, from the deputies, whether, you know, maybe we were off a little bit on the location or maybe it was fireworks. Sometimes we are wrong, but we're really good at gunfire. I'll tell you that. Lastly, privacy commissions. So San Francisco PD and Oakland are, have strong privacy commissions. And we've been passed through those privacy commissions repeatedly. So I just wanted to address that for a lot of the community members that might be concerned about privacy. And then real quick, we've got Fresno Police Department that has used this. They're very prolific on social media to tout that ShotSpotter is the reason they're getting to these, these gunfire incidents. They get very few nine-one-one calls and almost every one of their stories starts with a ShotSpotter alert. They made over a hundred and forty arrests, again, trying to find the folks that are shooting and causing problems in their community and trying to bring crime down. And there's a great video and you'll have access to this if you'd like to play it. He's such a beautiful speaker. Oh, sorry about that. What happened? Didn't mean to play that. So I got off on my.
It's very hard for me to picture, uh, a police response to violent crime without ShotSpotter. Uh, it's definitely an advantage.
Sorry. I think someone's controlling my screens. There are two more, uh, but, uh, there you go. So Sacramento County Sheriff and Sacramento Police Department use, thank you, ShotSpotter. And again, they've been able to reduce the response times by minutes, over three minutes on average. Um, they have a PIO that puts out these success stories and they've just been able to save lives and reduce gunfire in these areas where they have it. The last one is this one, and I mentioned this in the beginning of my presentation. But what's interesting is we find a lot of times illegal guns based on our alerts. We also find, and this is an example, now this is a large department, Detroit, but within the first twenty-four hours after they went live, a ShotSpotter alert led their police officers to a home. They did a cursory search, decided to get a search warrant. They searched the home and found that there was a whole manufacturing operation of ghost guns going on in the basement and they were able to confiscate tables full of guns. What they were doing, the people who were making these guns, is they were going out into the backyard and test firing these guns. They found over seventy-five casings and not once did anyone in the neighborhood ever report that home to nine-one-one. So I appreciate your time today. Thank you. We'd love to help you bring crime down, especially your gun crime and just make your community a safer place because we're all here to do the same thing and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green, and thank you, uh, Mr. Marquez for the presentation. And, uh, I, I do want to let, uh, the public know that this item here was brought to the council by Mayor Protem Laura. So I'd like for him to open up the questions.
Oh, great. Thank you. Um, so, so in, in, in taking a look at, at a program like this, the city of San Diego has something similar. I, I don't believe they use ShotSpotter. I believe they use GE. And GE also has a capability, they have two other added features. Um, one is camera surveil, surveillance. Um, and also they have the ability to turn on, uh, for a public Wi-Fi. So what they do is their systems are attached to LED lighting throughout the city. And you can have surveillance footage of streets. So that not only do you get the shots called, but then you actually get surveillance data, uh, on that, i- in, in potentially real time. Um, and the second application is a public Wi-Fi. And that's something I think during COVID, we, we saw a lot of, uh, communities, a lot of members, uh, you know, we saw kids in, in, in parking lots of libraries because they don't, they couldn't afford Wi-Fi. So that's just another option, but I'm, I'm really glad you're coming. Thank you, um, Director Marquez, for putting this together, for making, for spearheading this. And this is a really great program that I think is going to be a leader in terms of being able to identify and bring down, uh, gun violence.
Councilmember, Dr. Monica Sanchez? Councilmember Dr. Monica Sanchez?
I have a question. If, how do you determine what area, or it's only two square miles, correct, that will be identified? And maybe you don't want to share exactly where to the public it's going to be. But how do you identify where this is going to be detected?
Yeah, so absolutely. Great question. So I just obviously want to thank Jody and the staff over there. They're, they're the boots on the ground. They're going to actually be able to see where their biggest issues are taking place. And based off of information, heat maps, based off of calls for service, and, and incident, stuff like that is where we bring those heat maps together, and then we determine where that ShotSpotter is going to be deployed at. So it's all based off of real-time information, up-to-date information that's provided to us by the crime analyst next door.
Councilmember Camacho?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. All wonderful stuff. Just, you answered the accuracy question that I had, so 97% to 100% in some cases. Just as far as 60-second turnaround, so your, your, the station that receives and analyzes to determine between a fireworks or a gunshot, analyzes, makes determination, then calls who? The sheriff's department, calls 911? Does this, has a special number they call, or?
This is all done through our technologies. So the sensors pick up with 90% or more accuracy. The reason, when, when the sensors go off, and, and we've been building these and creating, making them better over the years, when they go off at 90%, the, the reason why we have an incident review, so it's our team, it's almost like our own dispatch center, and we have two across the country. One's in Fremont, California, which is northern, and one is in DC. And the, those folks are basically doing the work that Captain Marquez, when he worked for the sheriff, used to have to do themselves. So the accuracy is basically brought up by the incident review, being able to not only visualize the waveform that you may have seen on the video and listen to it, and they can oftentimes further weed out, is it a loud noise? Is it a firework? And then sometimes they have peer review. A lot of times, it's done in less than 60 seconds, but 60 seconds is our service-level guarantee. And then, again, that report card's going to tell you how we're performing. Never mind.
But once the determination is made, who do they, how do they get dispatched? How does the sheriff get dispatched?
Yeah, yeah. So this is automatic. So once the, they'll either go to their mobile app or their MDCs in their cars, or their computers, so even their smartwatches. Any of those devices can accept our alerts.
So it goes directly into the system?
It does. It does.
Okay.
It's all automatic.
If I could jump in just here real quick, how it used to be, and I'd be very quick, is that we would get a call from a ShotSpotter, that we had shots over in the particular area that these ShotSpotters were in, and we would then listen back, play the tape back. Hey, does that sound like shotgun, uh, shooting? Does it sound like shooting? And sometimes, hey, come listen this. Does this sound like shooting? Well, the new technology takes all this away. It's not done at the desk anymore. It's done through computers. The accuracy is so much higher, and it's so much quicker.
This is, uh, sounds like good technology. I know this is a pilot. We're, we have it for a few years. Is there any way, within six months, you can come back and give us some presentation as to what has been determined within the next six months or so? Or is that sufficient time for you to give us a, an update?
Yes, sir. Well, the pilot program for the second square mile is going to be for six months. So we should actually have data. We should actually know something after six months, whether or not it was, uh, it was important, or should I say, it benefited the city to do that second square mile for the six months. So six months should tell a story.
Look forward to seeing you in six months.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I, I like the fact that this is the latest technology in terms of being able to identify what type of, of caliber of handgun or assault rifle is being used as our men or women go out there and respond to a situation. It helps them identify, to know what they're up against going into a situation. So that's a big plus, right there. Now, I know we, we have license plate readers, and we have our, our cameras, and we still need to see the benefits of those later on. But this is integrated with all those systems working together, and I want to remain optimistic that it arms law enforcement with another tool in the tool shed to be more effective out in the streets. And as we know, time is of the essence anytime somebody is, has a gun wound out in the community. I like the negotiation of that six months. Whoever negotiated, job well done on that to get an extra six months at the same price. So, good job. I was thinking, too, when you look at what goes on across the country on some of the school campuses, that would be neat to have some of our school campuses to know what's, what's going on, to better alert, you know exactly where it's at, where it's coming from, and what you're up against. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I'm wondering if we promote this council meeting a bit further on the internet? We can get another six months and another couple more square miles. But with that being said, I'm very happy that our residents can rest assured that we're well-equipped, our sheriff's department and our captain, with extra tools, which are the latest technology. And the fact now that we're coupling, as Councilmember Garcia said, our license plate readers with this technology of ShotSpotter, I think it's just great. Residents know that we're, our, their safety is number one to us. And, but if you can kindly give us a scenario, Director Marquez, say there are some shots that are fired, and how that would work in conjunction with the license plate reader. If you can give us a scenario on how we can catch the bad guys. We really want the word to go out there that Pico Rivera, if you're a bad guy, it's probably not a good place to live. If you're a bad guy, you need to leave.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So let me just say this, that ShotSpotter, along with Flock, is now in conversations about being able to integrate the cameras that are in the city with the technology of ShotSpotter. Obviously, if we're able to bring those cameras online, and you're getting it in real time, you're not only being able to pinpoint where the incident's occurring, you go to a live camera feed, especially in the early mornings where there's less cars on the street, then you're going to be able to really narrow that down to the cars that are passing, and those cars are going to be captured on video. But obviously, that can be any time of day. But once that, once that system's up and running, where the cameras are integrated with ShotSpotter, well, I'm going to say that's going to be a game changer. That is going to be a game changer for the safety of the community.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We appreciate the, the presentation. Ms. Green, you have additional comments?
I was just going to say that for us, an interface is essentially an API where we package the latitude, longitude of the shots. We're actually identifying the rounds and the number of rounds and the order in which they're fired. And I think it was, thank you, Councilmember Garcia, for your comments. We're, we're so accurate that we not only get the deputies to the address, because we geolocate the closest address, but if the shots fired occurred in an alley or in the middle of a park or the middle of a campus, we're taking the deputies to what we call the dot, and the dot represents the shot markers. And that's how accurate it is. And so that package that we send of the lat-long, of the, of the order in which the rounds are firing in a sequence, and the date and the timestamp to the millisecond is what triggers things like the LPRs and those lights and others. And by the way, ShotSpotter was in San Diego, so just to let you know.
Very good. So theoretically, if there were some shots fired in a certain section of town, that technology sends an alert to our sheriff's department, along with, say, maybe a phone call from a resident, and the resident says that there's a particular vehicle of a particular color, and that technology with the license plate reader could help us to an arrest a lot sooner than later. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's a fair statement. I mean, all information's going to be pertinent. All information is going to be very important once the detective gets out there and they start handling it. There's different systems that they run cars through that can narrow them down. The last three of a license plate, the last number of a license plate, absolutely. So it's just another tool to help our detectives, once they get out there, to pinpoint who may have done this.
Great. Thanks again for the presentation.
Thank you.
Yes. With that, I'll, I'll go ahead and close the discussion and request a motion.
Move, Mr. Mayor. Second.
All right, so we have a first from Councilmember Garcia, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Lara. Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Camacho?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Lutz?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And Mr. Mayor, that was with the caveat with Councilmember Camacho to come back in six months.
Thank you.
And now moving on to the city manager's reports. Mr. City Manager?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Very good. So we'll move on to the next item, which is Good of the Order, which is AB 1234 reports, new business and old business. And we can start with Councilmember Camacho and work our way across the dice.
I have an outstanding report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Lara?
Just real briefly, I attended a, a community meeting. There were about 40 residents there. They expressed concerns. I think some of them were kind of summarized by some of the public comments, and we're going to do everything we can to address their concerns. Otherwise, you know, AB 1234. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilmember Dr. Sanchez.
Yes, I'd like to report, I represent the city on the SASFA, the Social Services Funding Authority, and they provide a lot of meal service as well as job service program. And I learned that there is a waitlist of, of residents from Pico Rivera that are low-income and seniors that are wanting food to be, to, through this program. But they are, the SASFA program, they don't have the funding or the ability to deliver that food. And so we, Pico Rivera out of, there are other cities, our neighboring cities, Whittier, Santa Fe Springs, La Mirada, and Pico Rivera. Pico Rivera is definitely the largest user of this. It's a joint organization. All of us pitch in a couple of dollars, and we provide these services to our communities. And so us as a board, the SASFA board members, there's one representative from each city agreed to come back to the city and also look for other resources. A reason being is with the loss of the COVID funds, since a lot of those federal funds have, have left, and also other, there's not as many donations and things being given out. And also due to increased costs, they're experiencing a little bit of backlog, not backlog, but the waitlist now. There's a few seniors on the waitlist. So I would like to potentially work with staff to see what we can do to support our, support SASFA and see if we can bring other resources and see what we can do to get rid of that, that waitlist, especially for our Pico Rivera seniors. And I, I think all of the other board members are in agreement, from the other cities are going to do the same, even though we are the, the city of Pico Rivera are the largest, our residents are the largest users of, of the food service system. In addition, I wanted to share that the Halloween Spooktacular is coming up on Saturday. And I'll let the Parks and Rec Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner, maybe Commissioner or Director can share some information about the details of the times and what we're going to do and what we're going to have.
Gabe, do you by chance have the flyer up? Or no? But anyways, 5:30 to 8:30 on Saturday, we have, of course, lots, tons and tons of candy to give out, jumpers, costume contest, and we've got all of our commissioners who will be our judges on Saturday. So that's always a really great time. We have entertainment. We've got the, like, live TV, so the kids are always on camera, which is really a great time. And then Gloria, what else would you like to add about it? It's one of your favorites, I know. I, I promised her she wouldn't speak, but now I'm, now I'm telling her to speak.
I want to hear Gloria.
But every child who goes, comes home with way too much candy. So, and it's one of our most popular events. We usually get about 5,000 families, 5,000 people there, and the line is usually starting around 4 o'clock. So it's really a good time. Last year, they opened early. So I suspect if the line is long, we'll, we'll be opening early as well.
Thank you. And that's it for my reports. I do want to take the opportunity, I appointed Gloria and Bobby as my commissioners, and I'll share, I want to embarrass them, share a little bit about them. Gloria, her, she has four children, two boys and two girls, twins. And Gloria's daughter was my youth commissioner. She was appointed to be the representative on the Parks and Recreation Commission, so now she's serving in her daughter's footsteps. However, she has, she has two, two school-aged children still, and her adults are, her, her two daughters are adults. And I felt Gloria was a great representative for the city. Her sons play, one of her sons played baseball, her other son's golf, and she's just a very active, intelligent woman that I thought would be a great commissioner, so I want to brag about them. Bobby, as well, was the only woman veteran that applied for the commission, and her application was so comprehensive. She even included everything, what is the, the DD 214, her whole military history. She is a proud, strong Air Force veteran, and she has given a lot of service to our community. And we're lucky, she volunteers at the senior, I mean, at the Veterans Center, and has been very active in the implementation and, and even volunteering to provide service and helping out there. So I want to say thank you for coming and brag about these, these, these wonderful ladies that provide service to the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Dr. Sanchez. And now, Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing on AB 1234, however, I just have a couple of things I do want to share. One was our Senior Center. I had an opportunity to go by there this past week and just check out the pool room, the exercise room, the lobby area, the Lotería Play. And this one resident from Westland, up on the north end, comes up to me, and once he found out I was a council member, he didn't know. So he came back and goes, you know what? I just want to make a comment. That I've been to the Almani Senior Center, I've been to Montebello, I've been to Norwalk, Santa Fe Springs, and Pico Rivera by far is the best center. We come here often, and this is the best. I said, I will take that message and share it at my city council meeting on Tuesday. So that was good to hear on, on that end. But the other thing, too, is if you haven't had a chance to take a look here at City Hall of the decorations on those floor and downstairs, if you look at the, the creativity, the originality, the thought and time that's been put into this, it's amazing. Watch out, nothing comes and taps you on the shoulder. Just beware of that. But kudos to the staff that really-
You have to come to the Parks Department. You have to, you haven't come to the Parks Department.
I got to go by there. I heard it was amazing as well.
Okay, so we're a contender.
Okay. So I just wanted to give a shout out there. But, but really, on Friday, and this goes to Rhonda Park staff, Rhonda Park staff, Yvette Ruiz and her staff, on Friday, they had an adoptive Halloween dance at Pico Park. And it's in collaboration with the adult school at Salazar. And it was just amazing when you walked in there on Friday and just to see everybody dancing and having a good time. You come around, the photo booth was just jam-packed. So kudos to the staff for reaching out on a non-working day and brightening up the days of those special group. So, which is one to shout. And then, Captain, shout out to our sheriffs. Thank you for the time and the visibility at Smith Park on Sunday. The board members really appreciated from the Dons organization. And just an FYI, seven of the eight Dons football team made the playoffs. The playoffs go, start this week, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I do want to mention that I had the opportunity to attend the Alranch Alumni Hall of Fame ceremony the last couple of days. And this ceremony took a pause for a couple of years, and Alranch Unified School District decided to bring it back. So then, some of the inductees were some of the veterans that lost their lives in Vietnam. And there was a good amount of, of 35 of them or so, if I remember correctly, that were inducted to the Alranch Alumni Hall of Fame ceremony. So honoring them, their lives, and the commitment they gave to, for our freedoms here, we really do appreciate that opportunity to attend that event there at the high school. The other item that I did have the opportunity to attend was the Alranch School District Strategic Plan. And the superintendent and the Board of Trustees and the president have provided this strategic plan for 2024 up until 2027, and that is their goals, their mission. They want to provide a safe environment for the students, and of course, they want to enrich the lives of the students so they're successful adults, prospering business owners, and, and so, community members, business leaders, as well as teachers, principals, librarians. school staff had the opportunity to give input, and so I had the opportunity to be a part of that, and I really did appreciate, I did give my input, I did mention that, you know, it would be great to institute the graduating GPA minimum requirement in Pico Rivera, so if you're a high school student, you know, it would be lovely to institute minimum graduating GPA of two-point-oh or two-point-five. And so that's, I felt, the responsibility to provide that input as a, as a community representative, and so I thank the superintendent and the Board of Trustees for that invitation. With that, that concludes my comments, and it is now safe to adjourn the meeting at seven oh nine PM.